Welcome to our Tuesday, May the 4th, 2021 Committee of the Whole Meeting. Sorry, this isn't live stream, but it is pre-recorded for your pleasure, viewing pleasure. Before we start the meeting, I will remind Council that this portion of the meeting is being recorded, but it is not being livestreamed. I will now do a roll call of Council for the benefit of the public watching this meeting. Council Sean, I am Council Sean Simpson, in present and chairing this meeting. Mayor Sean.
I'm here.
Council Martin. Council MacMillan.
Present.
Council Merlehan.
I'm present.
And Council Rennecop.
Present.
We have no no resolution coming from from closed session. But before we start, the Council of the Township reconvenes an open session, so we'll have to have a motion and a second or so we'll want to move that. Council Rennecop. And Mayor Shants. All in favor? And that is carried. Do any of the members of Council have any peculiar, declaratory interest? Seeing none. Items to come forward from closed section, we have none. Planning public, we have none. But we do have presentation and I'm going to ask Mayor Shants to introduce the presenters.
Thank you, Chair Shants. Yeah, I attended a heritage meeting a while ago and at that committee meeting, they were asking questions about how we can market the heritage of the area better. I could think of no one better than Warren Stow and ironically enough, right about that time, Warren had sent me an email, he was listening to Mike Farwell's show and Mike was talking about things to do in the cities. So Warren sent him, I don't know what it was, four pages maybe, like just an extensive list of things that you can do in the townships and said, I hope you're going to also highlight the townships. So with all these things coming together, I thought Minto is already marketing the region as well. I wonder what they could put together for us. So I'm really looking forward to seeing what Minto and Warren and our own Jenna Morris has have Morris have put together to talk about the best that Woolwich has to offer. So welcome.
We're just waiting for Warren to come on board. Is he the one that's going to start?
Jenna's actually starting, I think, aren't you Jenna?
I am.
Okay, go ahead Jenna.
But I was, I thought that Alex was going to share the presentation. I have it as backup in case. Oh, here it is. Perfect timing. Okay, so I will get started. Good evening, Chair Shants, Mayor Shants and Council. I'll get started with an introduction of the presentation tonight. So I thought this was going to be live streaming, but still, for the benefit of anyone watching from home right now, my name is Jenna Morris and I'm the Economic Development and Tourism Officer for the Township of Woolwich. It is my pleasure to be here this evening to discuss some of the amazing things to do here in the Township of Woolwich. We know that all of you guys know about our tourism anchors like the St. Jacobs Farmer's Market, Drayton Entertainment and the Elmira Maple Syrup Festival. So this evening, we're going to focus on some of the things, some of the hidden gems that the Township of Woolwich has to offer. And let me tell you, it was very difficult to squeeze this presentation into a short 15 or 20 minutes. We simply do not have enough time to talk about everything, which we feel is a good problem to have, but we did have to leave out some several, some of our really great places to visit, including our food and beverage businesses, which I think we could do a whole presentation on alone. With me this evening, I have Minto Schneider, the CEO of Explore Waterloo Region, which is our regional tourism marketing organization. She is also the Chair of the Tourism Ministry Association of Ontario and Vice Chair of the Tourism Industry Association of Canada. Minto has tirelessly advocated for the industry throughout the pandemic and we are incredibly fortunate to have her here in the region of Waterloo. We also have with us Warren Stow this evening and Mayor Shants and Counselor MacMillan. I'm sure you'll remember this friendly face from your high school geography class. Mr. Stow taught for the Waterloo Region District School Board for 30 years and retired from Elmira District Secondary School in 1999. He was born and raised in Kitchener, studied geography at Wilford Laureate, but back then it was called Waterloo Lutheran University. And other council members and staff may also recognize Warren from his role on a, on or his role as our local step on tour guide. Warren Stow has a wealth of knowledge of the Township of Woolwich and we are also incredibly fortunate to have his presence here. He'll take on most of the talking this evening. The presentation will start with Minto. She'll briefly discuss the role of Explore Waterloo Region and some of the great work they do. And then Warren will take on the bulk of the presentation to take you through a tour of Woolwich's hidden gems. And at the very end, to wrap things up, I'll close the presentation with a couple of projects and examples of how we support the important tourism industry. So with that, I will pass it over to Minto.
Thank you Jenna. Good evening, everyone. It's really nice to be here tonight. Thank you for including us, inviting us to to present today. And as Mayor Shant said, this is supposed to be more of a fun presentation because we've all been through too many COVID advocacy presentations. I know I have. As the destination marketing organization for Waterloo Region, Explore Waterloo Region is responsible for promoting our destination to attract visitors from outside the region. In the past year, we've altered our focus to encourage local visitors to get out and discover attractions, trails, restaurants and things to do in our own backyard. We've been working in lockstep with our municipal partners like Jenna and the BIAs to make sure that we're supporting local businesses and ensuring that we're sharing our, the most up-to-date information on health and safety protocols, as well as support that's available for businesses through various levels of government grants and programming. The silver lining of the last year has been that we've created new ambassadors. We now have countless locals who have shared on locals on social media and with their friends and families about all the things that they've discovered about the Waterloo region and their own backyards. This slide shows a word cloud. A word cloud is a visual presentation of words. Cloud creators are used to highlight popular words that are and phrases based on frequency and relevance. Jenna, Warren and I shared our lists of what we thought the top sites in Woolwich were, and this was the result. And as Jenna said, it was hard to put everything that we had on our list into a presentation. So we really have had to pick and choose. And if any of your favorites are missing, it's Warren's fault. Today, we're not going to talk about the top five attractions in Woolwich. And, and as Jenna said, there are hundreds of them. In fact, Woolwich, and please don't tell any, this is being recorded, I know, but don't tell anyone else I said this. Woolwich probably has two of the, the most important attractions in the whole region in your boundaries. You all know what the top attractions are. We're going to talk about the hidden gems tonight. It's important to note that we take great care to promote only those sites that are actually open to the public. We don't want to encourage visitors to flock to areas that are not prepared for guests. For, for example, we promote the Grand River and specifically where public access points are located. So we try to make sure that, that people aren't walking on private property or disturbing the peace of, of anybody that is not ready to welcome visitors. So on that note, I'm going to pass it over to Warren to continue with the presentation.
Thank you, Minto and Mayor Shants and Council of Woolwich. Thank you very much for the invitation to speak tonight. We are going to try to highlight a number of things in the next 10 or 15 minutes. But starting with the trails, Woolwich Trails, the township has 10 public trails totaling more than 100 kilometers. And these trailheads are very, very important and popular as we have evidenced by the number of cars that you see at the trailheads on the weekends. Founded in 1992, the Woolwich Trails Group, an active volunteer group, working with trail coordinator Ann Roberts, promotes hiking and biking on the trails for health, recreation and is low-impact transportation alternatives. The group is also involved in trail maintenance and development. They developed a trail guide for sale. So here are some of the, the trails and the signs. It's a wonderful area in which to, to, to walk. But last Saturday morning, I opened the front page of the Waterloo Region Record and there was an interesting story on the new Elmira Nature Reserve that is being developed in southeast Elmira of Union Street. This 27 hectare site will create walking trails through five distinctive restorative native habitats. This project of Trees for Woolwich, a volunteer group dedicated to planting more trees in the township, working with Mark Schwartz. Earthscapes, a local landscaping company, will be transplanting mature trees on the site. This will ultimately become a very popular gem in the township. The trails and open spaces that you already have. And I think this is just, I, living in Kitchener, come up and use your trails regularly. Walking my dog on a leash. Next slide. The Grand River was designated a Canadian Heritage River in 1994. The Grand flows through the township along with the Conestoga River. The whole watershed was designated from the source of the Grand near to its mouth at Port Maitland on Lake Erie. So the Grand and the Conestoga River, along with small streams like the Canagajig, Cox Creek and Hopewell Creek, were there when the early settlers arrived to the township and they chose these sites. Mill sites and for the water supply, the bridges of Woolwich. These bridges that bridge the water courses in the township have a long and very interesting history. The iconic Westmont Road covered bridge, last remaining covered bridge in the province of Ontario, opened November the 15th, 1881. But I understand will undergo badly major renovations this year. It'll also turn 140 in November. It is one of the most photographed and painted structures in the region of Waterloo. The Peel Street Bridge in Winterburn, temporarily closed. Vasco Street Bridge in Conestoga, limited access and Chalmers Road Bridge in Cockington, Woolwich Town Line are closed. But our Steel Trust, Steel Trust Bridges that were identified in the 2013 Arch Trust and Beam Heritage Bridge Inventory done by the Heritage Resources Center at the University of Waterloo, we now have a recorded documentation of these bridges. The Low Level Bridge at Three Bridges Road to St. Jacobs has provided an important transportation link for old Orton Mennonites' buggies crossing the Conestoga River since 1862 when it was built. Popular water-related activities such as fishing, kayaking, canoeing are important, important activities for Woolwich residents and people from outside the township. Next slide. Next slide. Here we go. Woolwich Township was originally settled in the early 1800s by people of German Mennonite heritage who came from Pennsylvania and from Waterloo Township. They mainly settled west of the Grand River. These farmers, there were farmers who saw the value of the rich agricultural soils. They've always been people of the land. Historically, they have been fixed farming operations, raising livestock and crops. Their culture is kept alive today with their well-kept farms, their white meeting houses and parochial schools. There are a number of buggy sheds in the township and in a nearby city of Waterloo. The Mennonite story in St. Jacobs, run by volunteers, is a multimedia interpretive center, which has accurately told the life and customs of the Mennonites. The Mennonite story has also produced self-guided driving tours for visitors and has helped to arrange step-on guides for bus tour groups that visit the area. That has all changed in this past COVID year. Armgate sales are an important part of the local economy with a variety of products from vegetables, eggs, maple syrup, quilts, et cetera, being sold using the honor payment system. The No Sunday Sale signs indicate it's a Mennonite farm. Mennonite-run bakeries such as Settlers Home Baking in Conestoga, Riverside Baking in Westmont Rose at the Last Acres Variety and Hillcrest Bakery in Floridale are popular places to buy fresh baking. My wife and I do this every Saturday morning. Kitchen and Cuttings in Elmira provides a variety of Mennonite-made preserves and baked goods. And the Waterloo Central Railway offers train rides from St. James Farmer's Market to Elmira and back through some of the Mennonite farms. An important part of the gems that you have in Woolwich Township. Next slide. Before the influx of European settlement, Woolwich Township had a rich and at times complicated history of First Nations presence who occupied the area for about 11,000 years. Woolwich was once known as Block Three, consisting of 86,078 acres of the Haldeman Land Grant of 1784. Have you ever enjoyed a Block Three beer? This land grant of 10 kilometers on either side of the Grand River from its source to its mouth was donated by the British Crown to Joseph Brand and the Six Nations for their loyalty, loyalty to the Crown in the American Revolutionary War and to compensate them for lands that they had lost. The 2018 Cultural Heritage Landscape Study of Wellesley and Woolwich Townships, done by the Heritage Resources Center of the University of Waterloo, is an interesting read and provides some historical gems, which include the Westmont Rose Covered Bridge, 1881, Juan Mickle's Castle on Middlebrook Road on the top left-hand corner. It's a private facility. Inveron School, Woolwich SS Number Six, 1874, the Stone School on Bridge Street in Westmont Rose is also private. The Stone Karen Jacob Schatz. Or Jacob W. Schneider in Bloomingdale Community Center. It is wonderful to read some of her history of the Mennonites. William Bill Tutte, a mathematician and a World War II codebreaker from that park in England, taught mathematics at the University of Waterloo and lived in Westmont Rose. He is buried in the Westmont Rose United Church Cemetery. See Bonneville's Church, 1877 Cemetery in Maryhill when it was called New Germany. The Alsatian influence and Wayside Cross along Charles Street North to Andrew Klein. Crook's Track in the Winterburn, Winterburn area was started by James Crook and families from England and Scotland beginning in 1821, 200 years ago. There's also Messit, Messitus Church Cemetery and plaque on Peel Street going down to the now temporarily closed bridge. Just north of Cox Creek in the early 1830s, eight families totaling about 35 people created Coldburnburg, a small settlement of free blacks from Ohio. A monument to Elias Weaver-Bingham and Snyder, EWB, in St. Jacobs was one of the founders of Ontario Hydro, along with Adam Beck from Baden and Daniel B. Detweiler from Roseville and Captain Thomas Smith, plaque in Prittle Park on Conestoga, right beside the river, first owner in the township, 1807, from Vermont. Woolwich Township has a very rich history, which has yet to be documented or recorded in a township history book. Could this be a project for a retired local politician? And now over to you Jenna.
Thanks Warren. And next slide, please Alex. So public art, to add on to some of, I guess, the new age, some more of our more recent art and culture, things to see and do in the township. I wanted to just share some thoughts about this. But on an earlier slide, there was a photo of the marble quilt. There's a 15-foot tall quilt made of stainless steel and 10,000 marbles at the head of the Healthy Valley Trail, the Health Valley Trail in St. Jacobs. And wow, the art, the artist behind the project is resident Ella Brubaker, who brought her vision to life with the local quilting group. The slide in front of you shows various wall murals found in the village of St. Jacobs in downtown Elmira. Some as new as last year and others that have been there for quite a few years now. The St. Jacobs BIA commissioned two pieces of wall murals last year and are working with businesses to do the same this year and for, and have plans to do it for years to come. And then this year, the downtown Elmira BIA with support from the Economic Development Tourism Department is installing 10 public art pieces throughout the downtown. And so there will be a downtown Elmira art exhibit later this summer. Public art adds meaning and uniqueness to our communities. It humanizes the built environment and invigorates the public space. It provides an intersection between the past, present and future and between disciplines and between ideas. It attracts visitors both local and from afar. I look forward to continuing to support the arts and culture industries in the Township of Woolwich. Other projects we are working on to support tourism in the township include hosting and coordinating Taste the Countryside, a local foodie event which sprung up last year because, or with the need to support the, our food establishments. Also supporting the Regional Tourism Grant, TARP, through Phase One and, and the second round. Public washrooms in the village of St. Jacobs, Mill Street for patio seating and strengthening both local and regional partnerships to help our tourism businesses thrive. Tourism in Woolwich is abundant with opportunity and I join our community in anticipation of when it'll be safe to encourage tourism once again. So with that, I'd like to close off the presentation by thanking Warren Stow and Minto Schneider for joining us this evening. I'll say it again, we are incredibly fortunate to have them both in our region and for helping to market the wonderful tourism assets that Woolwich has to offer. If anyone has any questions, we'd be happy to answer them now.
Thank you for your presentation on the wonders of Woolwich. Council, do you have any questions? Mayor Shants.
Not so much a question, though. That was great. Thanks for, for the presentation. I wanted to say thank you and maybe wonder if perhaps said retired politician could team up with one of our presenters for that book.
We're working on it.
Perfect. Anyone else? Seeing none. Thank you, Ms. Schneider and Mr. Stow and Ms. Morris for your time and your presentation to Council. Thanks.
Thanks for having us.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
So moving on, we have no delegations, no unfinished business. And we have one item to be received for information. Would someone be willing to move that consent item? Council MacMillan.
I'll move receipt of that.
Okay, and Council Rennecop. All in favor? And that carries. Thank you. Should we move on to staff reports? This evening, we have Jared Pupay, Mr. Pupay, Director of Infrastructure Services, to provide counsel with an overview of the report. Mr. Pupay, you may begin when you are ready.
Thank you, Chairman Shants, through you to Council. Before you this evening, we have IS 172021, which is a tender award for surface treatment program. And this year, we're happy to report that Dunkore Enterprises was a little bitter. We have a lot of experience with Dunkore and, you know, we're happy to, to be able to present that this evening. We are, we are spending more than we have in the past, as Council will be reminded, through our operating budget. There was some gravel road conversion program that's occurring that is in conjunction with Welfare Moser. And we are doing the Welfare Moser Town Line Road and we are also doing Fife and Lurch this year. So those are the three roads that we are going to be surface treating and converting from gravel, as well as some other roads in the geographic area of both Winterburn and Maryhill. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions Council may have.
Council, any questions? Council Martin.
Thank you. Through you to Chair. I believe that three years ago that Council instructed staff to go down the road of changing two gravel roads into tar chips or one gravel road in asphalt each year. We didn't get it done the first year, then the second year we had to do some ditching. So this year we're going to get the tar chip. What are we planning for next year to keep this program going?
Thank you. Through you Chair Shants to Counselor Martin. We are continuing on with the remainder of the gravel budget to do some ditching work on, it would be Ryder and Vance Road that we would be looking to prep and that would be consistent with staying in the, we'll call it the southeast quadrant of the township down in, in the Breslau area. So we are proceeding with that.
Okay, anyone else? I do have a question on the Woolwich Town Line there. Is that a shared cost on that section?
Yeah, Chairman Shants, that's correct. That is shared cost with Welfare Moser. It's a 50, 50 split between us and, and Welfare Moser. So that's a nice stuff to be there.
Yeah, okay. Any other discussion? Do I have a mover for the motion? Council Martin, Secondar, Council Merlehan. Any further discussion? If not, we'll call this question. All in favor? And that is passed. Thank you. And we have the next report again, Mr. Pupay. And you may start when you're ready.
Thank you. Through you Chair Shants, to members of Council. This is another project on our capital program. It is the engineering work related to what we'll call Phase Two of the Maryhill Water Main Replacement Project in the Isley area of Maryhill. So this is Halter, Isley and Notre Dame. And in this case, we are asking Council to award the engineering design to Dylan Consulting Limited at a total cost of $91,000 and also to authorize staff to be able to purchase any land required as a result of, of the design, which would include some daylight triangles or something like that to facilitate some of the infrastructure that may be needed out there and also obviously to authorize Mary Clark to sign any documents. We undertook Phase One in Maryhill and I believe that is in around 2015. And we did the, we'll call it the northern portion. And that greatly improved our water distribution system. We had an auto flush that still operates in the fire hall. And it just to keep chlorine residuals up. There have been some great improvements in Maryhill with the region combining both the Heights and the Isley wellhouses together now. So they are one system that has improved, but this is sort of that last stage that we are going to be removing the old ductile iron water main and replacing it with a PVC water main system. And we feel that will be in further enhancement to the chlorine residuals out in Maryhill and reduce likely the amount of, of wasted water that results from auto flushing. We have not worked with Dylan Consulting. We're very familiar with them. They do a lot of work that we are, we're familiar with, but we just haven't had the opportunity to work with them. So this will be an interesting experience for us and we look forward to that. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions Council may have.
Okay, questions? Council, Council Merlehan?
Yeah, thank you. Through you, Counselor, or Chair Shants, to Mr. Pupay. The, the purchasing of property, is that come out of a different budget and what, what kind of cost are you anticipating? Is it less than $10,000 or is it much greater than that?
Yeah, through Chairman Shants to Council Merlehan. It's a bit of an unknown with design projects. So what we do ask is that Council authorize staff to at least undergo that process. And then we typically come back to Council with, with that requirement. And then we typically come back to council with, with that requirement of, of the property we've identified to be needed. So there will be another phase. It just does allow us to engage property owners. I'm not aware of anything here that, that may require substantive land purchase. But, you know, for, for some daylight triangles here or there, but I would say it, it would all, all in costs typically. And if I looked at Union Street or something like that that we've just walked through, would be, you know, less than twenty thousand dollars total. In Maryhill, we may not have any, in fairness, it's just sort of the standard clause. We, we look to be able to at least engage residents with if need be.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? I do have a question on your, on the stormwater discharge outlet. Is that going to be designed? Because I think that Maryhill Road is going to have some stormwater going down there as well. So will that be designed to take all of that? Or will that be a different outlet?
Yeah, to you, Chairman Schatz, that, that is a different outlet. The outlet for this component of Maryhill has already been built through Phase One. The regional work that's going to occur on Maryhill Road has a different outlet location, all to Hopewell Creek, but two different outlet discharge locations.
Okay, thank you. There's a recommendation in the report. Does anybody want to move that? Commissioner McMillan and Commissioner Ratacock, any more questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? And that is passed. And I think you're backed up again, Mr. Pupay.
Thank you. You, Chairman Schatz, to members of council, final report for IS this evening. It revolves the, involves the gravel tender award report. Once again, we received one bidder on our gravel program. That has seems to be an issue for the past number of years, but we're very happy with the service that, that Joe Kerr Limited has been supplying the township. They, they're very good to work with. So we're happy to, to, to seek council's approval for the award. We are also appreciative of council in the, in the budget process. We were going down in about eleven year cycle on our gravel resurfacing program, and there were additional funds assigned for, for resurfacing, and we're on a seven year cycle. And that's what's reflective here. The good news stories, the good news story too as well is that the per ton price has remained static from last year as well. So there's no increase in price. So that was, I thought, to be a good news story. And we, again, our state, like the surface tree program, we tend to stay in a geographic location and not have contractors jump all over the place. So the, the roads are elementing Delian Scotch play, Scotch line, King Street North in, in, in sort of that St. Jacobs north end there area. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that council may have.
Council questions? We got, see any? New Jerusalem Road, that, that section, I thought that was private property down, way down in that corner, but apparently not, I guess, eh?
No, New Jerusalem Road is, 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 is public.
Yeah, I just thought that extension was, was just a private area to go back into the farms there. So that, that kind of surprised me.
No, it is, it is, it is public. That's correct. Yep.
Okay. Okay. Okay, so we have a recommendation. Anybody want to move that recommendation? Commissioner Martin? And Mayor Schatz? And all in favor? And that is Carrie. Thank you, sir. Next, we have Mr. Thomas Vanderhoff with the late, the last report of the evening. Mr. Vanderhoff, you may begin when you are ready.
Evening, councillor and mayor. Through you, councillor Schatz. So staff released RFP for the replacement of both the Conestoga and Hopewell Heights playgrounds in late March. With that, we included some public consultations here as well too, and we did receive a significant response back from the community. We received five submissions, which is the greatest number we've seen in the last few years, which was a positive. And then following scoring, New World Park Solutions was awarded the highest score. We haven't had the chance to work with them in the past, but, and as a result, we did some extensive reference checks and site visits as well. Their proposal, you know, addressed accessibility at the sites, and we thought provided the greatest value as well. Staff would plan to work with the, the contractor as well to, to address some of these suggestions that were brought forth by the community. Additional seeding, natural themed colors, that sort of thing, among many others. And then finally, I guess RCS is, you know, coming to the end, approaching the end of our, our capital playground replacement program in the next few years. I think we have two or three to go. So there will be some gaps, gap years as well in there. And with that, we are recommending an award to New World Park Solutions, and I'm happy to answer any questions that council may have.
Council, any questions?
Commissioner Martin? Thank you. Through you to Thomas. What happens with the old equipment that they came out?
So sometimes we work with them, they will recycle it, but typically, typically it will go, typically they'll recycle it themselves or scrap. There is the auto currents where we will reuse some of it as well too. We keep a lot of the swing equipment, that sort of thing to reuse elsewhere. But there's been different approaches in, in previous years, but typically it goes to, to scrap and then recycle.
Any other questions? I just have one comment. We have to watch what our advertising does because my grandson asked if there's going to be cotton candy at the Hopewell Creek one.
Yeah, we, we received suggestions, not just for the playground, but also for the park and the rest of the community as well in Brezlot, so.
Okay, we have a recommendation here. Somebody want to move that recommendation? Mayor Schatz, Commissioner Ratacock, any further discussion? That's a question. All in favor? And that is Carrie. Thank you, Thomas.
Please, council.
Okay, that's the, the staff reports. We're moving into other business. And I'd like to take part in the discussion on the following motions. So I've asked councillor Ratacock if he would share this part of the meeting at this time. So, Mr. Ratacock, if you want to take over? You're muted, sir.
Sorry about that. This is an appeal street discussion that we're going back to after some probably comments by the public, and so we're glad to reengage this kind of conversation. So I think Mayor Schatz, I turn it over to you because you've raised the, or brought about the recommendation. So go ahead, Mayor Schatz.
Thank you. We've heard lots of comments from the community about the bridge, about people breaching the barricades and worries about safety. Council decided, the decision was made to rehabilitate to a pedestrian bridge. And so I'm, if we're going to rehabilitate to a pedestrian bridge, let's get on with it. Let's move ahead with it. And so I, I checked with staff about funding to move the engineering piece up a year to this year, twenty twenty-one, and then have the rehabilitation done in twenty twenty-two. Those costs can be recouped from the federal tax, gas tax reserve. I also understand that, that we've, we've talked a lot about financing and, and where that could come from. So I, I leave that open to the twenty twenty-two budget process after we get the engineering and know exactly what we're dealing with. So I'm, I'm also aware that this is a very, there, there are a lot of different opinions on where we should go with this on council. And, you know, I, I, I respect that and so I'm just trying to decide whether to, to place the motion first or have a discussion first. But I think what I'm going to do is I am going to move the motion that I put forward, and we can have a discussion and see where it goes from there if I can get a second.
Is there a second to Mayor Schatz's motion? Councillor Merlehan, you second it? Thank you. Any further, well, we'll have some further discussion. Larry, you had said that you wanted to speak to this?
Yeah, yes, I do. Thank you. And I, I agree with Mayor Schatz's needing to get on with it. I don't think it's a good idea to close it for a number of years and then, then decide to reopen it under whatever it gets reopened as. So I, I think we do have to, I have to move ahead. But I, I wrote some notes here, so I will apologize right at the start and ask that you bear with me as I, as I get to my points. I made notes so that I don't miss any points that I want to make. The following information is from a public consultation. Fifty-seven out of sixty-seven comments wanted to keep the bridge open for vehicular traffic and/or horse buggy traffic. Four of the sixty-seven stated for pedestrian access only. So when did we, when and, and why did the community change their mind only to have a pedestrian access? Or did they? When did the whole process change from a public consultation to social media? How do I determine that emails that I have received, some simple cut and pasted ones, are actually the will of the entire community and not just people jumping on a bandwagon? The, the stats certainly don't show that. I'm sorry, but I cannot support Mayor Schatz's motion for the following reasons. I stand by my original decision for a long-term solution for this bridge by replacing it and utilizing some of the structure to give it a heritage, heritage design. This will last for upwards to a hundred years or more as opposed to twenty. In my view, to reopen this structure for pedestrian use only is short-term thinking. It is not a good use of tax dollars, no matter the source of where these tax dollars come from. It is a Band-Aid solution at best. If we want something for future generations as inheritance, in my mind, twenty years doesn't fit that bill. This just delays the inevitable. If it's going to be removed in twenty years anyway, why spend the money? We may as well just remove it now. I would, however, support council to take a second look at our decision. Counselor, counsel was inadvertently denied our sober second thought on the new motion brought forward at the time. The original motion was defeated, and a new motion was presented all in the same meeting. When your original motion was defeated, it should have died at that point. Then it should have been brought back as a future agenda item for further discussion during a committee of the whole meeting. And then ratified at a council meeting, offering council a sober second thought. That process was not followed. I cannot support opening the structure strictly for pedestrian use only now or in the future. So therefore, I will not support the motion.
Okay. Thank you, Chair Schatz. Councillor McMillan, go ahead.
Yeah, just a, a point of order here. We're not debating what to do with the bridge because that's already been decided. That, or that motion was tabled, seconded, debated, and, and voted on, and it was passed. So what the bridge is turning into, we, we can't really debate that tonight with, with the mayor's motion. If we're going to re, revisit what to do with the bridge, that would, there, there's a process for that, and, and it requires, you know, a, a different process to revisit it. I, I think I have to push back on the fact that there was no sober second thought. The fact that council changed their mind is the sober second thought. And having a motion on an agenda item is entirely appropriate. Now, the fact that that motion changes doesn't mean there was no sober second thought. The changing of the mind is the sober second thought. So I think, I think it's important that we keep clear, you know, the motion tonight is to accelerate the timeframe. It's a separate motion. It needs a second, or it has had that. We can debate that and vote on that. But I think we're, but if we're going to actually debate the use of the bridge, then we would have to have that, that process where we reopen a, a, an approved motion, whi- which is an entirely different process. So I just wanted to, you know, check on what the, the parliamentary procedure was there with what, what we're doing here tonight.
So you're saying that the motion itself is to speed up the process and not to change the decision that we made? Is that right?
That's the way I understand it. The mayor's put forward a motion regarding the timeframe, and that if we want to actually change our decision on, on what we decided with that bridge, that there is a process for that, and we would have to go through that process.
Okay. Councillor, councillor Schatz, and then Mayor Schatz?
Yeah, thank you. But by bringing this back into the council chambers, does that not allow for a discussion?
Yeah, yeah, allows for discussion, yeah. But this is a, this, this motion is not about, as councillor McMillan said, this is not about changing the nature of our decision on what kind of bridge, just that we want to speed up the process on the bridge that we decided. Clerk Hummel, do you have a helpfulness on that process?
I would go with what friend's saying is that it, it, your focus right now should be on a motion that's on the floor, not what was done previously.
Okay, Mayor Schatz, do you have, did you still have a comment?
I was on process, just trying to, to sort of sort, sort this out. So yes, my motion is on the floor. If there was a desire to do anything different, would that be a deferral of this motion and a reconsideration of the other motion? Or I wonder, Val, if you can just clarify what that process would be if that's the will of council.
I think you can, you have the option to withdraw this motion by a consent of the majority of members present. We wish to do that and go back to the previous decision and reconsider that decision. You could go that way. You have to decide what you want to do with the motion.
Yeah, any, any comments about the motion on the floor? It was seconded by councillor Merlehan? Councillor McMillan?
And then the other thing is this motion could just be defeated. This motion is on the floor, it's seconded, we're debating it. You know, if this motion were defeated, or even if this motion were approved, I, I think even if this motion were approved, councillor Schatz could still have the door open to revisit the original motion because all we're talking about is timeframe here. And that pathway to revisiting that decision is, is still open regardless of what happens with this motion on the floor.
Thank you. Councillor Martin, you had a comment?
I'm a little confused at what we're doing, but I would say that I agree with what councillor John said totally. I think we're making a poor decision. I also don't think it's properly used for gas tax money. That's not what gas tax money is for. It's to do roadwork and bridges, bridges that we can use, not just for walking across. We have a bridge in Florida Road that last week they put a fifteen ton limit on the thing. That bridge is obsolete because no trucks, speed trucks can't, can't cross that. I, like I work for them, because speed trucks are twenty-ton empty. So they got to go around. So to me, something like that is much more important than this. And that's where I believe gas tax money was for. When I read all the whereas, I know I'm being picky here. And they're probably well-written, but we totally forgot one thing. And I just wrote it all this way. And whereas council heard from the Menominee community requesting a new structure be built to accommodate farm equipment, council in their wisdom decided to ignore the request. That's a true picture of what, what we did. And they certainly were all in full force. This room here was full, and from Winterburn, the schoolhouse was full. And we really haven't given them much consideration. Building a new structure is certainly affordable. It only makes sense. It only makes sense long term. And I won't support any motion that just talks about rehabilitating the bridge for pedestrian use. The other thing I'd like to point out is, I don't think that the residents know what they're getting into. They didn't know what what it meant when we said we were gonna barricade the bridge. We were asked, what does that word mean? What does that mean? I think they think that when we're gonna rehabilitate this bridge, it's gonna be from one side to the other. You can walk the whole thing. And that's not the case. My understanding is that they're gonna have a five-foot width walkway from one end to the other. As we saw in those pictures that Jared sent, that's what they're gonna get. And when they get that, they're gonna be very upset because that's not what they're thinking they're getting. And I think it should be very clear that the people know if we go down this road, this is what you're getting.
Thank you. I I think we still have to, the motion on the floor is to speed up the process of the pedestrian bridge, and I've heard two of the counselors talk about that they don't want to support this because they want a different kind of bridge. I appreciate that much and I thank you for going, explaining your position. But can we, do we have any, do we want to go back to the original motion from Mayor Shants that we want to speed up the process? Or we want to do something else? Counselor McMillan?
Yeah, I'd just like to, one, thank the mayor for bringing the motion forward. I think that it's an appropriate response to the the feedback that we heard from the community after the barriers were put up. I will support the motion. I think we have some more interesting conversations to come, going into budget. Budget season twenty twenty-two, but for now, this is a responsible way forward. Reflects the decision that counsel made, and I think it responds to the feedback in an appropriate way, so I will be in favor of the motion.
Thank you, Counselor McMillan. Counselor Merlehan, then Counselor Martin, I think you had your hand up.
Uh, yeah, thank you, Chair Ratac. I also want to concur with Counselor McMillan said, I support the motion written as is. Tonight, there hasn't been any new information presented that wasn't already thoroughly debated on at least three different evenings, including the fact that the pedestrian bridge, you know, isn't going to be a complete bridge. That was discussed extensively. I have no problem defending that to the public if people again are unaware. We we talked extensively about the bridge being barricaded. And and again, a lot of people were unaware, and I think it was more to do with the treatment of the bridge, and it was a little bit shocking. But, you know, once all that has been explained, the the public, you know, I haven't heard anything else from it. There was a a couple of days of outrage and and or a week maybe, and and that was it. But I I do want to thank Mayor Shants for bringing the the motion forward. I'd like to see the Peel Street Bridge get rejuvenated for another. One of the 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 information we had today from Mr. Boupe was thirty years in in the in the amount of money that was talked. But, you know, this is a bridge that I hope township residents will be using a hundred years from now. And any of this stuff you can, with proper maintenance and and if we start looking after these things, I mean, maybe by a hundred years it'll all be replaced with something else. But but the the heritage value is really the part that is worth preserving. So I'll just leave it that.
Thank you, Counselor Merlehan. Counselor Martin, you had another comment or no?
Um, my comment would be another cause to speeding up the process, but let's be very clear, I believe we're doing, we're building the wrong thing. I would also remind you or at our second last meeting, the mayor said that she would not put one sentence in this project. Less it accommodated the Mennonite community with their equipment.
Chair Ratac, just wondering, I'd like to ask for a recorded vote on this, just to give you an opportunity.
Yep, thank you. Counselor, so Chair Shant, sorry, and then Mayor Shants.
Yeah, thank you. I I was gonna ask for a recorded vote too, so Counselor Merlehan beat me to that one. I just want to remind Counselor Merlehan, maybe you should look at what we voted on because the bridge won't be there in a hundred years.
Uh, Mayor Shants, go ahead.
Thank you. I I I did say at a meeting, I don't know that I said I wouldn't put a cent in. But I I am disappointed that we don't have buggy traffic availability across the bridge. But the cost that we were quoted to do that was more than I thought we wanted to put into the bridge. You know, I'm I'm looking, I'm looking at the bridges and and it just sort of so happens that the tourism piece was on tonight. That wasn't intentional. You know, we've got the the covered bridge, we've got the Glasgow Street Bridge, we've got the Peel Street Bridge. They all have historical significance. And we look to tourism for a a good part of our economic development and our economy here. And so I think that is something that can be a really neat kind of attraction for the area. Even though it's pedestrian and even though there isn't vehicular traffic across it. You know, yes, Counselor Martin and Counselor Sean, I I really wish we could have buggies across it. And if if our staff can come up with some kind of a design that is much more reasonably priced, I will certainly rethink that decision. But with the the cost that we have presented to us now, we've made the decision to go pedestrian, and so I'd like to get on with that and get it open for for the people, for for our Mennonite friends who who want to walk across it.
Thank you, Mayor Shants, for your comments. So, uh, Counselor Merlin has asked for a recorded vote, so I asked Mayor Clerk Hummel, do I ask each individual? Sorry, I've never done this one before, so you'd you ask us. Okay, thank you. Thank you for clarifying that. You're you're muted.
Can you, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay, so all members of council are going to vote on this in random order. I'm going to, unless unless you don't want me to, I think I should read the motion even though it's very long. Are you okay with that? Okay.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
Our House on February twenty-third, council passed a following resolution directing staff to finalize the environmental assessment for the Peel Street Bridge as a pedestrian rehabilitation. And whereas Peel Street Bridge due to structural and safety concerns is currently closed to all forms of public use. And whereas council has earned significant interest from the Winterburn community regarding a desired appeal street bridge reopen for recreational pedestrian use as soon as possible. And whereas council is interested in reopening the bridge to pedestrian use. Now, therefore, the council of the Corporation of the Township of Woolwich and Axis follows. Let staff be directed to work toward reopening the Peel Street Bridge to pedestrian use in twenty twenty-two. And further that engineering costs be funded from the federal federal gas tax desert fund in twenty twenty-one. And further that financing decisions for the rehabilitation be held until the development and approval of the twenty twenty-two budget so that better construction cost estimates can be established to help inform the overall funding options for this project, which may include the use of additional federal gas tax funding. And further, the council point GM Blue Plan to complete the design phase by the end of twenty twenty-one or early twenty twenty-two and exempt this appointment from your requirements of township's purchasing bylaw. And this was moved by Mayor Shants and seconded by Counselor Merlehan. So if you say yes, you are voting in favor of that motion. If you say no, you're opposed to the motion. Is everybody clear on what you're voting on? Okay, first one on con is Counselor Shants.
No.
Mayor Shants.
Yes.
Counselor Merlehan.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
No.
Counselor Ratac.
Yes.
Counselor McMillan.
Yes.
The score yes is two noes. Counselor Ratac, you can declare that passed.
Okay, that the motion is passed, was presented by Mayor Shants and seconded by Counselor Merlehan. Thank you very much for the spirited discussion. I think it continues to be a an important issue that we have to continue to listen to our budgetary processes as well as the citizens of Winterburn and the places around it. So thank you very much for your honesty around the table, oh, around the Zoom call, sorry. Anyway, I'll pass it over to Chair Shants now.
Did a fine job, sir. One of the North Hydro Holding Corporation annual meeting of stakeholder proxies. So we have Director of Finance, Mr. Richard Patrick, is going to introduce this topic. And here he comes, and you may start when you are ready, sir.
Yes, uh, thank you, Chair Shants. So the members of council, we have the annual general meeting with the One North Hydro. As council is aware and for the listening public, we're shareholder of the One North Hydro Holding Company with which one of the entities that we own as part of that holding company is the wires company or what we know as Water North Hydro. So we have an upcoming annual general meeting on May the twentieth. And since this is a council that owns shares, we're a shareholder, we need to designate a physical person to be the proxy to vote on behalf of of us as Woolwich Township. We typically have the mayor fill that role for us. And so it'd be staff's recommendation that we continue on that and appoint Mayor Shants as as Woolwich's proxy at this annual general meeting.
Council, do we have questions or comments?
Since. Um, I'll put a motion forward to along that line to appoint Mayor Shants as our designated water, Water North Hydro person. Make that sound better, though.
Do we have a second or for that motion, Counselor Ratac?
Yeah.
The discussion, questions? Who will ask the question, all in favor? And that is passed. Thank you, Mr. Patrick. So we did, we did that through a resolution. Outstanding, outstanding activity list. Anybody want to talk about anything on that or add anything to it? Has anybody read it lately? It's getting pretty stale, some of the stuff, so, okay, I don't see anything, so we'll move on. Does anybody wish to take action on the items of correspondence?
Uh, yeah, through you, I more or less have a question, and I'm not sure who this would be. There's a one from the town of Mono, it's about cannabis cannabis licensing. And I'm just wondering where Woolwich stands on that. I, it wasn't that long ago, I was going downtown Waterloo, and I think there's like four or five cannabis shops right on their main drag. And and through Kitchener, there's like, I swear, every corner has a cannabis shop. And I was just wondering, I guess it would be a zoning thing, maybe Mr. Pomponi. But I I'm I'm just wondering if there's anything in our planning that would maybe prohibit that many cannabis shops in a in an area. I would hate to see downtown Almyer just, you know, have four or five of those of those shops just on the main, on the main drag like downtown Waterloo does right now. So, that's my question.
I'd have to check into to see what the zoning is. Typically, cannabis shops are just I don't know if we have anything set back distances. We we used to see those in the eighty for arcade, where you could have an arcade within five hundred meters of a high school. I think that's the sort of thing that you have. Or is there a maximum? I know you have to be careful. Playing restrictions on the number of legal uses that are permitted in municipality. Having said that, we could certainly look into it. What are our regulations of cover off the zoning?
Okay, I I didn't get all of it because it was a little garbled, but yes, if if planning could look into into that, just to see where we were at, if council's on board with making that direction, I just I I just wouldn't want to be surprised. All of a sudden, we have cannabis shops all over the place.
Mayor Shants, I don't want to put you on the spot, but did you want to introduce the Ministry Solicitor General Letter at all?
Sorry, can we, can we, I think Counselor Ratac had his hand up, and I also wanted to comment on the cannabis before we move on. Chair Shants?
Thank you.
I I thought, I thought when Chief Larkin had come and talked to us, that there was a population ceiling. You had to have certain amount of population before you could have a cannabis store, but I I don't know if that has gone away with the amount of the licensing that's gone on. But I thought that's what he said, but again, Mr. Pomponi can look at.
Anybody else want to, Counselor McMillan?
Yeah, thank you, Chair Shants. I I I agree with Counselor Merlehan that I think it would be not ideal if we had four or five cannabis shops littering our main street. But I I would, I would want our staff to take care that we're not excluding a cannabis shop entirely. I think one might be appropriate, four would obviously, you know, change the whole dynamic of of the downtown. But we have a beer store in our, in our, almost downtown, we have a liquor store in our downtown. Cannabis is a legal substance, and I think, you know, we we could debate the the health impacts of alcohol compared to cannabis. I I think that having one, I I wouldn't want to go so far as to create, you know, like, you gotta have a fifty-foot setback so that we can't have it in a downtown core. I I do agree that we don't want four or five of them in a in a small area, but but I certainly wouldn't want it to go so far that we excluded it altogether, a- as long as it is a legal substance.
Thank you. Oh, Mr. Grant.
So I think it is a good idea if planning reports back, however, a few things that I recall from when the province introduced this. They made it clear that originally, they only put out certain a number of these business licenses, so to speak, based on the fact that there wasn't a reliable supply. Once the supply got better, I guess, so to speak, I think that's why you have seen some of these businesses more readily start up. You may recall as well, many municipalities, ours included, did provide some advice back to the province. And they did speak to, you know, we did speak to the concerns around distance from schools and other sensitive land uses and and areas. And so when planning reports back, I think it wouldn't be just about what our zoning talks about. I think we need to go back to the fact that the province didn't say it's a matter of not allowing this. It's how they're allowed and under what circumstances. So I think that's the context in which we need to report back as well.
Yeah, just, I just want to clarify, I'm not, I'm not in any way opposing cannabis shops or any kind of legal business to operate. But what I'm asking is nothing that we don't already do with, when it comes to fry shacks, you know, you can't be within the downtown or six hundred feet or whatever from downtown, you can't be so far away from another fry shack. There there's, there there are things that we do, and I only mentioned it because, again, downtown Waterloo, I there are some really big shops going up there. And then in this one part of Kitchener, it's like this, there's just, they're all over the place. And it's, and it's not that I, you know, I think it's bad or good or any, I mean, any kind of business. If you just, they're all payday loan things, you know, you wouldn't want that either. You know, it's not something I, you know, I'm a shopper or anything of that, but I, I said, I'm not opposed to to. Uh, a shopper or anything of that, but I I say I'm not opposed to to what people want to do either. Um, but I just think we need to, if we can protect. Um, you know, areas in the township from becoming one thing because it's uh, it's an easy thing to sell and. Then uh I think it hurts us in the long run if we don't look at it now.
Yeah, understood.
Any more discussion on that? Nope. Mayor Shaw said, sorry if I put you on the spot, but it's a, it's a good news story. I thought maybe you wanted to share if people are are watching.
Yeah, I mean, I can. It's it's um, I think this is an annual or it's it's a regular thing that the ministry does um to uh. To certify, I guess, our emergency management services. And so I would highlight the great work that Avril Tanner does uh in coordinating our emergency services. And maybe Mr. Brennaman would like, would like to say a little more about that.
Sure, through you, um, through you, Mr. Chair to Council. Um, certainly, I would make the following observation. Uh, in a typical year. There's no shortage of work that the province requires in terms of paperwork, documentation, training, and exercises. A- and uh it it's a very onerous process and one that we're, we still continue to strive to ask the province to streamline. That being said, I I do want to give credit where credit is due, which is the province. Where in other years where we've experienced, say, an a regular uh emergency, such as, say, a flood. Or an ice storm, they have never been lenient in saying. Uh, that we still don't have to go through the training and development and the actual exercise. Thankfully, considering the worldwide pandemic, they loosened the restrictions this year and made sure that. Since we're all going through the pandemic, the compliance process was not as onerous this year. Um, you know, so I wanted to speak to that, which, again, all of the CEMCs and all of the municipalities were quite relieved about. But um, yes, I do want to underscore is that every year, it's a lot of work. Um, Avro does a great job in terms of coordinating, not just the hours of training and development that we must comply with under provincial. Regulation, but also the uh training exercises that we need to do, uh and some members of council. Uh, I think at the start of not this term, but the previous term, uh, we went through a live exercise in Bresla. Uh, and and uh, you know, we hope to do those sorts of things in the future, so it's a lot of work, but it's worthwhile. Obviously, preparing us for emergencies such as the one that we're in right now, uh, the worldwide pandemic.
Thank you. All right, uh, we have no public notices and notice, no notices of closed meetings, no notice of motion. So do we have somebody that would like to have the adjournment? Oh, Counselor Martin, Counselor Ratacup, all is in favor? And that is scary. Enclosure and council would like to thank all who participated in the meeting and all who tuned in tonight. Um, where whenever you get the chance to see this, please join us next Tuesday, maybe eleventh on our YouTube livestream. Again, for our next council meeting. Council members and staff, I will remind you to stay connected quietly. On Zoom until we receive confirmation that the livestream has stopped, and good night, everyone.
Thank you.